Roll call, please.
Councilmember Mobley?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Here.
Mayor Trent?
Here. I was waiting. Her place not here.
Okay, moving to the consent calendar. We have 13 items on the consent calendar. All of the department's monthly reports. Approve temporary over hire of the payroll and benefits administrator position. Approve bi-annual review and amendments to the city's conflict of interest code. Approve amended part-time classification and pay rate schedule for fiscal year 2425. Approve selection of administrative assistant two for parks and recreation. Anyone want to pull any of those?
I'd like to pull M.
Pull M, okay. You want to pull any? Okay, go ahead with M.
I just wanted to say congratulations on the new hire. I think she'll be an excellent addition.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to approve? Oh, my public comment? Anybody in the public want to comment on this consent calendar? Nope, C and N will close public comment.
I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar items A through M.
And I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, consent approved. Moving on to city business. Authorize the interim city manager to explore and establish Fortuna's enhanced infrastructure finance district. Staff report, please.
Good evening, council. I have a brief presentation for you on the enhanced infrastructure finance district. And just, all right. There we go. So this evening, I want to talk to you about a possible funding option for capital improvement projects in the city of Fortuna. And that possibility is called an enhanced infrastructure finance district. And I will be referring to it as an EFIN. So what is an EFIN? An EFIN is a special financing district. It can aid communities in funding a wide and diverse variety of public capital improvement projects. The projects can be funded by capturing and leveraging property tax increments. And property tax increment is growth in property tax. And that growth would be from the 1% property tax rate generated within the EFIN area. And added improvements gained through the EFIN funding supports future development and results in increased property values. And this generates increased property tax revenues from the base year, which can then be leveraged for capital improvements. I just want to be really clear, and I'll say this over and over again, the EFIN does not impose a new tax. It is simply utilizing the growth in property tax to fund capital improvement projects. We can move slides. Affected taxing entities are not required to contribute their property tax increment to the EFIN. Participation in the EFIN is voluntary. Each tax-sharing entity which elects to join the EFIN has the option to allocate up to 100% of its portion of the tax increment to the district. Schools are not allowed to participate in EFINs, as that would be likely disadvantageous for them. We can move. Part of the reason that the EFIN is coming up as a financing option is because community development and public works have been working on mill district development, in particular the recent release of the draft mill district-specific plan. Of the approximately 104 acres, 73 of the acres are actively being marketed as the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center. And the mill district, particularly the Fortuna Mill Commerce Center, as envisioned in the specific plan, will be a hub for diverse uses in the region. We are hoping for a well-designed center of commerce with flex space, transportation, general commercial, advanced manufacturing, medical, government, office, multifamily residential, and compatible industrial uses. In order for the Fortuna Commerce Center to be fully actualized, the city's infrastructure will need to be addressed, particularly the U.S. interchanges at 12th Street and Kenmar. As you know, these interchanges bisect the city. The existing configuration at both interchanges is confusing, complex, and inefficient, and results in excessive vehicle queuing at these locations. There is also limited to no pedestrian and bicycle facilities allowing for safe multimodal transport. And they're just visually not particularly pleasing intersections. The city has significant residential and commercial development potential, and the current configurations limit economic and residential development opportunities. So improvements to these interchange changes will allow for the natural growth of the city and reconnect the city to the Eel River and allow for safe pathways for bicyclists and pedestrians. And here are some pictures, pictures of, maybe, maybe not. There we go. Pictures. These are some concept designs of what those interchanges are likely to look like. On the left is 12th Street, and on the right is Kenmar. And so this is what we are hoping for in the future. The cost of these interchange improvements is beyond what can be funded by development fees and the city. Federal transportation grants have not currently been awarded to the city despite lots of efforts to receive additional funding. And an EFIN is a potential revenue generator to thereby finance these public capital improvement projects. So let's talk a little bit about how we establish an EFIN, just so you are all well-informed. An EFIN establishment will take up to about 12 to 18 months. This is not a quick process. It's a very heavy administrative lift. We will need to form a team, and that requires legal counsel and economic advisor. I do have some future meetings already scheduled with an economic advisor, because you need to define your EFIN boundaries, and you need to estimate your assessed property values and then estimate the actual increment that you may be able to receive. And so that's where an economic advisor comes in handy. We can go to the next slide. We will need to conduct outreach to the other taxing entities and to the affected residents and property owners. And this is the point at which we would likely reach out to the county of Humboldt to gauge their interest in possibly participating in an EFIN and sharing their, a portion of their property tax increments with the city of Fortuna. And that could be advantageous to them, because they have Measure Z and potentially Measure O, which is on the November 5 ballot. And so any retail development that we, any retail development that is established in the mill district could benefit them because of sales tax. Then we would initiate a formal process. We would need to create a public financing authority. The city of Fortuna does already have a public financing authority, but this is a special district, and it will need its own public financing authority. I just confirmed that with CalEd last week. We can move on. And then we have to prepare an infrastructure financing plan, which is all the legal descriptions and tax increment revenue projections. And also, we would, will want to make sure that we are prepared to describe the projects that the EFIN would fund. And then we would move to a pre-adoption phase. And then, sort of last but not least, then we have to hold three public hearings, and if there's protest, then we would potentially hold protest hearings and a protest election. And again, here, I want to just say, this is not a new tax. This is utilizing property tax growth. So again, that's not money we've received yet. It's money in the future. As property values increase, we would take a percentage of that and finance these public infrastructure projects. And then we would move on to the approval and formation process once those public hearings and protest proceedings have been completed. And that, in a very brief nutshell, is the EFIN. And so the request for your council today, we can go to the last slide, is to authorize the interim city manager to explore the establishment of a Fortuna Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District, including but not limited to establishing a public finance authority and identifying a legal and economic advisors. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
I do have questions.
Okay.
Are there any other cities here in Humboldt County that are part of this or have their, have set their own up?
Yes, the county of Humboldt has an EFIN on the Samoa Peninsula. And my understanding is the city of Eureka is also looking at exploring an EFIN.
Okay, so it's fairly new for
For Humboldt.
the local cities to be doing this.
Yes, it's relatively new in Humboldt County. It is being done across the state.
Why would someone protest it if it's not an increase?
Maybe they don't want to see the public infrastructure improved, possibly, or it may just be a lack of understanding that this is not a new tax.
Okay. And last question, how large of a committee?
It's, the public finance authority, I believe, is five, three of which, five members, and I believe three need to come from the city council and two need to come from the public. Now, if there's other taxing entities, like the county of Humboldt, that join this EFIN, then that composition changes a little bit, and it would need to include that other taxing entity.
Okay, thank you.
I know we've looked at and explored other options for financing, and this seems to be one that we actually have some control over, the success and what the funds get used for, and within whatever bounds the state puts on how we use them. But if we're raising them for infrastructure, we should be able to use them for anything we need in that area. So I think this is a good, good thing to look at and take a cautious approach and see what, how it works out. So, thank you for looking this up, because the last two Caltrans things we looked into didn't pan out, so. I know that there's people that still walk to work at the motels and restaurants in the morning, regardless of the weather, and this would be a good way to help clean that up and make it a safer way to get there.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Do you have any rough calculations how much this would bring in?
No, I did not attempt to do that at this point in time, because the boundaries need to be established. Likely, it might be the entire city of Fortuna, but that's where the economic advisor would be really helpful. And also to deter, to determine the actual percentage of property tax growth that we would contribute to the EFIN. So not at this point in time, but that would come back to your council in the future.
So it has a potential of being a large amount of money for the things that we want to?
Possibly, possibly.
Okay, okay. Do we have any comments from the public on this item? C and N will close public comment.
One of the things that has crossed my mind is that whatever economic benefit that comes is going to be down the road. The improve, you know, we're going to be looking at the improvements and leveraging the future money for the improvements, at which point we can see the growth and the property, the mill district, for in this case, come to fruition, and then something would actually happen. But until then, you know, we, it'd be hard to picture what it could be, but we know it's going to happen. We just have to figure out with our advisor what that increase would be. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to explore the establishment of a Fortuna Enhanced Infrastructure Finance District, including but not limited to establishing a public finance authority and identifying a legal and economic advisor.
Now, second?
Okay, we have first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item is authorize the interim city manager to execute a contract for the sanitary sewer closed-circuit television project and approve a supplemental budget request. The staff report on this?
Yes. Brendan Byrd, I'll be giving the staff report this evening. I'm just pulling up a PowerPoint really quick. All right, and this is for sanitary sewer closed-circuit television, although I promise, even though I have a PowerPoint, I will not include any photos unless otherwise requested. So yes, I have a contract award recommendation this evening for what we are calling our sanitary sewer closed-circuit television, or CCTV inspection project. That also comes with a supplemental budget request in order to award the project. So to start with the purpose and need, so when, actually in 2015, the city was filed a notice to sue by the California River Watch over operations at our sewer treatment plant and our sewer collection system. The city, as a utility service provider, operates both of those systems under permits with the state and regional water quality control boards. And with that, we have operational parameters that sometimes we have violations. It happens, everybody has them. We reconcile that with our state and our regulatory agencies. Sometimes those go untaken care of on the state side, as that's one of the major liabilities that opens an entity like the city up to third-party litigations from groups such as the California River Watch. And during this particular time, they were very active with a number of cities locally in the county. I know that Arcata and Eureka and others have also had to deal with similar issues. So in 2016, we moved through the initial lawsuit process and ultimately entered into a settlement agreement. And as part of that settlement agreement, the city agreed to perform a number of items as part of our sewer collection and treatment operations in order to, you know, move some of the environmental happenings with our utilities more in the direction that they were hoping to see them go. And those included a lot of areas, but it principally boils down to the six items in this list here, which include the city agreeing to perform a sewer collection system condition assessment and perform repair projects. And that condition assessment would be based on closed-circuit television inspections. It would also include updating the city's sanitary sewer management plan to have more information on our sanitary sewer overflow policy. Update our testing standards for our percolation ponds to reflect the same standards we do when we go direct to the river in the wintertime. Add a link to the CWIX dashboard on the city's website. CWIX is a long acronym that is the reporting tool that we report our permit violations to, to the state, because it's all public record, and that's how the public, but also people like River Watch, find out what's going on, good or bad, with utility operators such as the city. To file a notice of intent to comply with the statewide composting permit, and lastly, to recommend to the council adoption of a citywide lateral inspection and replacement program. So I will note, items two through six have been fully completed in the years since the settlement agreement. To just bring one up in particular, the last item, the recommendation on the staff level that the council consider a citywide lateral inspection and replacement program. This is the only one of two through six that had a little more meat to it. For those who are unfamiliar with this, these are, for like the reasons in Arcata or Eureka, when a home is sold up there, it requires inspection of the private side of the sanitary sewer lateral. And if there's any defects found, they need to be corrected before the sale of the home is closed. It's a means that was brought forward largely at the state level and through the interest group level as a means to try to get those laterals replaced, because it's at the lateral level for homes where a lot of sewer INI happens, that's inflow and infiltration. So it's a means that, you know, agencies have been using through ordinance in order to make sure that people are performing repairs on their private infrastructure. That was brought in 2018. The council was not interested in moving it forward at that time. It's something that the city ultimately could consider if we wanted to find more mechanisms ultimately to reduce INI in the city of Fortuna, and largely with capacity issues at our treatment plant and in our pipes, because it's stormwater entering the pipes instead of sewer water. But with all that additional information on that last item, like I said, we have completed items two through six. For item one, the city has approximately 53 miles of sanitary sewer transmission mains, or, or collection mains, I should say. And we have completed through our 2018 sanitary sewer evaluation plan and through various efforts throughout the years with our own crews, about 15 miles of inspections and rating and cataloging and some repair projects. We have about 38 miles left to go. We did purchase a sewer camera in 2018 and have been plugging away at doing things on the staff level. I will note that with staffing challenges with COVID and with just general expertise at the staff level, that is required to implement the sewer camera and to do it all in the way that makes us regulatorily compliant has been difficult. And that's not been unique to Fortuna. I've had discussions with Arcata and Eureka staff. You know, a lot of folks put in this position early on, and these regulations that were brought upon largely through suit by agencies like River Watch, took an initial approach of trying to do a lot of work in-house and have also struggled with it, just due to staffing, other maintenance demands, some of the expertise and staff turnover, things of that nature. So it's not been through lack of trying. We've, we've faced a lot of difficulties in getting as far as we need to. So recognizing that we were not going to meet that target by the end of our compliance, which is near the end of this year, first part of next year, we started developing a bid package for how we could get contractor assistance to perform the remaining CCTV inspections and rating and cataloging. So as you'll see here on the right-hand side, this is a figure we developed for the bid package. And in a nutshell, what is shown, that mic is a little touchy, I find myself, yeah. Okay. What you see in blue are the areas that, between the contractor and between city staff, we've been able to camera to date and catalog to date. The areas shown in purple, yellow, gray, and I guess what is a light green color are the areas that we still need to camera and catalog, which again is about 38 miles of total asset. We developed this into a bid package, which was released on July 1st, and we opened bids on July 29th. The city did only receive one bid for the services, which was from APS Environmental. We did split out the total project into a base bid amount and three alternates without specifically knowing exactly how the project would come back relative to our available budget. We decided to break it up into manageable chunks so that we could incrementally award, depending on how the total project cost came back. But I will note, and we will look at it here at the financial impact section, that the total cumulative bid from APS Environmental, which is about $708,000 to $709,000, the city's budget for this is about $700,000 currently. So, a little bit on bid period follow-up, whenever you only receive one bid, you know, you always want to take a step back and, again, make sure that things seem reasonable, that the costs seem reasonable, that, you know, folks who are interested in competing on your project were. Long story short, I think, although there was a lot of interest in our project, these are typically out-of-town contractors coming with very specific timelines to complete the work, and ultimately, it just didn't work out for some of the folks that had shown a lot of interest, but ultimately couldn't meet the timeline that the city needed to get the work done in order to remain in compliance with our, with our settlement agreement. So with that, we have had discussions with APS Environmental. They are, you know, fully qualified to complete this work. They have active licenses. They've actually completed a project just last year of essentially the same scope and scale as we are proposing to be contracting with them now for the city of Eureka, actually almost down to the same amount of footage, I believe, that they produced. So they are more than qualified to perform the work. They are working in this market sector currently. And as far as assessing the cost, because, you know, when you only get one bid, you don't really get to see where you fall on the range of what people are doing the work for. We did develop an engineer's estimate for this project based on work with previous contractors and other agencies and that had bid results available. And we found that their total proposed project cost was only about 4% above our engineer's estimate. So we do feel that their cost, that they came back for the whole project was reasonable, and it reflects market rates, so we do feel good about that. So with that, we would recommend to the council that you authorize, you know, staff to contract and award the project with APS Environmental. So going into the fiscal impact, this project is currently budgeted, budgeted in the 2425 fiscal year budget for $700,000, which reflects the engineer's estimate with a small contingency. To award the total project would cost about $709,000. So what staff are proposing is that in addition to council authorizing award of the contract, that they, that you also authorize a $30,000 supplemental budget request, which would allow staff to award the entire contract and then to have a small contingency. This type of work typically doesn't result in a lot of change orders, because you're not digging, you're not finding unknowns. You know, the, about the biggest one you'll find is if you have to go to the other side of a manhole and go from another area because of a blockage or an elbow that you didn't anticipate. But typically, it's, they, you know, they run pretty close to budget, and we'd actually propose initially to award the base bid and then bid alternates one and two, which would allow to have a slightly larger contingency as the project progresses, ideally in a satisfactory manner. We could award that last one as we get closer. So that would be a means that we could reserve a little bit of extra funding if we needed to, to make sure that we were going to deliver the project on, on budget. With that, the SBR funds would come from Sewer Reserve Fund 560, similar to where the initial budget is coming from. And that has a reserve fund balance of, I believe, over $10 million, and our finance director could probably provide a more accurate accounting of that. Lastly, I do want to note that this, these costs have been included in the CIP, in the budget, and in the sewer rate study that we completed recently. So it's not something new. It's not something we haven't anticipated for, budgeted for. It's a small adjustment, fortunately, to complete the work that we anticipate doing. So with that, I'll close it out and just leave it with the recommendation, which is that the council authorize the city manager to execute a contract for the sanitary sewer CCTV project with APS Environmental and approve a supplemental budget request of $30,000. And with that, I am more than happy to answer any questions, and thank you.
Thank you. Questions from council?
Brendan, what are the alternates? Are those phases of the work? Are those locations?
Yes, actually, I will bring up my share again. The alternates are the different zones as shown in that map I had. So we split the city up into discrete areas consistent with this map. So you'll see up here in the yellow, I believe this is the base bid area, which we call the downtown. The gray is what we call the lower midtown area, which is bid alternate one. The green in the bottom, the Hampton Heights area, I believe, is bid alternate two. And the Riverwalk area over here is bid alternate three. While we're speaking about this, I am considering, and we are looking at, because we do have a little bit more time of, of still trying to have our crew get to the Riverwalk area, because it's a relatively small one that we could do, and that's another means for which we may not move forward with awarding that alternate. But, you know, we want to be able to preserve that opportunity should we need to, especially given our crews are tackling some other larger maintenance projects right now.
How long do they need to do the whole project?
I believe, in the case of a contractor like APS, in discussions with them, they'll deploy multiple vehicles, upwards of five or six vehicles. And a lot of estimates that I've seen in the past have indicated that they can do, like one unit can do somewhere on the order of 2,000 feet per day, you know, which is somewhere just under a half mile. So it's really limited by the number of vehicles they have deployed doing it. And so if they had that many, you know, presumably, they could get, you know, one or two miles a day.
Have they said, once they're awarded the contract, how long before we can get on the schedule?
I, I have spoken with the gentleman that bid on the project, and I believe he actually may be in on the Zoom if I'm, if I'm correct here. But we have talked about getting them mobilized, hopefully in September.
Okay. And then how long do you think it will take? Will it be finished by fiscal year end?
That, that should, that, certainly by fiscal year end. We are really, the, the target in our contract is actually by December 31st of this year. So they'd be looking at, at jamming pretty heavily. Given the time of year we're entering into, you know, if it was a big active rainstorm, it limits how well you can do, because as the pipes get full, you can't camera them very well. The flip side of that is, as you're in the winter and the pipes are flowing full, you need to do less pre-cleaning in order to get a good camera inspection. So there's the potential for some schedule creep due to lost days with a storm, but otherwise, they should be able to, you know, plug along most days and hopefully get done by that December 1st date. So, or December 31st, I should say.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Any questions, Mike? Okay, I'll open public comment. Anybody in the public have a comment on this item? Okay, C and N will close public comment.
I'll make a motion to authorize the interim city manager to execute a contract for the sanitary sewer CCTV project with APS Environmental Incorporated and approve a supplemental budget request for $30,000.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next item is approve a water service extension request for 406 Nob Hill Road, APM number 200. for 406 Nob Hill Road, APM number 200-202-002. Is there a staff report on this?
I just want to start sharing PowerPoint.
Sherry? Is your microphone on?
So good evening, Mayor Trent and honorable council members. I'm Sherry Meads. I'm the Community Development Director. And as the mayor eloquently pointed out, I'm here to present to you a water service extension application. So here's just a little bit of a project description. It is for 406 Nob Hill Road. And there's an absence of reliable water, which I'll explain a little bit more in the presentation. And the reason I'm here before you tonight is this is a property that is outside the city's jurisdiction. It's County of Humboldt, but it's within our sphere of influence. And what that means is it is an area that the city has a plan to eventually incorporate. We don't know when that'll happen, but it's one of those things that you look at in long-range planning as an area that, you know, establishes the final build-out and boundary of the city. So there is a California statute that allows local agencies to extend water and other utilities to properties outside of their jurisdictional boundaries. And for us, it requires approval by the Humboldt County Local Agency Formation Committee, commonly known as LAFCO. And LAFCO can authorize what this project is, newer extended services outside the boundaries where the water supply is inadequate to meet the domestic needs for its intended use. And if additional quantities cannot adequately or reasonably be developed. This is not to support or induce development. That is a strict LAFCO statute that we wouldn't be doing this just so the person could build more or that type of thing. It's just to serve the existing single-family residents. So the city of Fortuna also has a regulation. So we start at the state level that allows it pending LAFCO approval. And then the city of Fortuna policy, it's actually, the policy itself is called the Water and Sewer Utility Services to Areas Outside the City Limits. And it pretty much agrees with what the state and LAFCO says that if there is an existing single-family residence within the city's sphere of influence, which this residence is, and what is additional requirement for the city is that there has to be a qualified hardship. A professional has to identify a reason that they need to be brought onto city services. Another way that a person can get city services outside city limits is they can request annexation. This property owner is not requesting annexation at this time, but one of the conditions of approval in the resolution that accompanies this item is a requirement that he sign agreement that if the city of Fortuna requests that he annex at a future date, he has to do that. So the location, I just pulled up an aerial view here to show folks where it is. It's, I drive past it all the time on my way home. So as you're leaving Fortuna going north on 101, it's between the Main Street on wrap to northbound 101 and the Palmer Boulevard exit to the northeast up there. You can get to it from, oh God, is it Hope Street? I think it is. Yes, Hope Avenue, which you can get to from the northbound streets downtown, like Sixth, Seventh, that type of thing. And then a little closer zoomed in, you can see the parcel itself. You can see that it is, we can't tell that, but it is 10 acres developed with a vacant, single-family residence and agricultural outbuildings. The residence itself was served by a spring located down a hill and then across Nob Hill Road. So it's pretty far from the structure. And alternatively, what you can see here is that there is water line service from the city that is very, very proximal to the location. And we've also verified with the city engineer that the city has adequate water services to serve this, to approve this request and also continue servicing the existing uses without any drop in their service. So the documented hardship was performed by fish drilling and pump. They established that the spring that had been used is no longer viable to serve the residence, which is currently vacant, and that improving the system that they have now is not feasible. There are no registered wells that are on the property at this time. And drilling exploration is limited due to the slope of the parcel and the location of the septic. So any additional exploration would be very costly and would not have a guaranteed result. They could spend a whole lot of money drilling around and not find anything adequate to serve this parcel. So this project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act under a Class III categorical exemption, which allows the extension of water main sewage, et cetera, to serve small residential development. The next steps would be upon council approval of this water service extension application. Staff would submit an outside agency service request and all of the supporting materials and the fee paid by the applicant to LAFCO for their final consideration and action. So after tonight, you would not have to do anything else if you so approve this. So with that, the Community Development Department recommends that the city council by resolution approve a water service extension request to extend water service outside the city's boundary to 406 Nob Hill, APM 200-202-002. Authorize staff to submit an outside agency service request application to LAFCO and to determine the project to be exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions. That's the end of my presentation.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
No, you answered everything I would have asked.
Yeah, very thorough.
I have just a little bit of expansion on one of the questions. It said that it can service the property, but it's agricultural property. So does that have, that has a potential of using more water? Is that already taken into consideration?
So the county's general planned land use designation for it is currently residential estates. The city has pre-zoned it for agricultural, which supports a single-family dwelling.
Okay.
But it doesn't specify anything more about whether or not they could require additional water beyond what the residential main would be.
Okay.
And maybe the city engineer could explain if there would be a difference. Sorry, Brendan, I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, no worries at all. To Sherry's point, the land is zoned that type largely because of the location and that it's outside the city limits currently. To my knowledge, there's no use of that area for like irrigated land type application there. We are considering this application in context of providing water to a single-family residence through a meter of appropriate size. And so that generally would be our expectation in this particular case. And that is what our determination is based on as far as capacity at that location goes, of which there is more than plenty.
Thank you.
Brendan, doesn't this also have a different rate structure than a city of Fortuna residence?
Correct. So anybody outside of the city of Fortuna is charged one and a half times what our established fees are for those areas. So as part of that, you know, the fees that would be charged for this particular residence are one and a half times whatever the normal amount is, say they get a one-inch meter. So some of that additional impact is kind of captured in that too. And we do approve or we have these requests for outside of city service areas.
Thank you.
And that's actually included in the resolution itself, so it's bound.
Thank you. Okay, we'll open public comment. Does anybody in the public have a comment on this item? See, and then we'll close public comment.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2024-29 and read my title only.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Roll call, please.
Resolution 2024-29, a resolution of the city council of the city of Fortuna approving a water service extension request application to extend water service outside the city's service area to 406 Nob Hill Road, APM 200-202-002, authorizing staff to submit a LAFCO outside agency service request application and finding the project exempt from CEQA. Councilmember Mowgli?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Johnson?
Yes.
Mayor Trent?
Yes.
Okay, our next item is authorize the interim city manager to execute a contract, a construction contract for the Rona Creek Bank Restoration Project. Staff report on this?
Good evening, everyone. This last winter, which was a rough winter for us, a lot of heavy rainfall, there were several instances of issues around the city, one of which was when debris coming down Rona Creek was going through Rona Park, a tree that's laid across the creek right behind the cook shack by the picnic area. It caught up a bunch of debris, causing the water to impound and got to a depth where it eroded the bank. And it eroded significantly right behind the cook shack there. And so it was up to the very bottom branch on that tree that you see going across the bank. And so we waited for waters to recede and actually had Dan Collings come in and cut out one more branch that sat lower catching pretty much everything that was going by. Now, as you can see in the background there, there was quite a bit of erosion and it's gotten very close to the foundation of the kitchen there. So staff began working with consultants and contractors to find solution designs to repair this bank. Staff has experience with these types of projects and worked closely with CDFW, Water Board, and the Army Corps with a design that we were able to get permits for pretty readily because we worked together on it. The design itself, they really didn't like the idea of a lot of riprap. So we made a hybrid kind of riprap, all about six feet tall, five or six feet tall, and then soil layers going up above there, which those soil layers will be planted with willow species for stabilization. And I do want to mention that city staff will be doing the vegetation efforts and the monitoring for this project. So the bid package was released publicly on August 1st, and the bid openings were on the 12th. The city received three bids. The highest bid at $60,000, the next bid was at $55,000, roughly, and the winning bid was $44,898.40, which that is what staff is recommending that the city council allow the city manager to execute. Not to be outdone by precision. Staff is also suggesting that we have a contingency for $51,001.60, bringing us to a nice friendly round number of it, not to exceed $50,000 contract. So we did find that Mobley Construction, MCI, was confirmed that the bid was fully responsive. So with that, staff recommends that council approve contract not to exceed $50,000 funded by the CIP 9373 Citywide Storm During Maintenance Project, which has a fiscal year budget of $295,000.
Thank you. Questions from council?
No, I do have a comment though, that there's not a conflict of interest. I am not related to Mobley Construction.
Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public have a comment on this item? See, and then we'll close public comment.
I make a motion, we authorize the interim city manager to execute a construction contract for the Rona Creek Bank Restoration Project with Mobley Construction.
I'll second.
Is this voice vote?
Yep.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Okay, our next one is approve a supplemental budget request for the P Street Sewer Replacement Project, CP, CIP 9121. Staff report on this?
Yes. This is another one that's a result of last year's really rainy weather and lets us know why the city of Fortuna used to be named Slide. On Ninth Street, up where it branches off to Christian Ridge Road, the hillside slid there exposing a six-inch sewer mainline. The ground above it that still remained is putting tremendous pressure on the pipe. So staff immediately got out there, got to a higher manholes where we could pump and bypass the segment of pipe. We've been utilizing power from a neighboring resident ever since and pumping to a spot in Ninth Street where we have blockades and stuff that is really impeding the upper parts of the Ninth Street. So shortly after the incident, staff began working with SHN Engineering to develop a design solution to reroute and permanently eliminate that section of pipe. The plan is to dig up at the inlet to the manhole on Ninth Street and then to bore up the hill and intercept the line just below the manhole on the hill. Staff received the plans on the 9th of August, got them to Mercer Fraser, who provided us with an estimate on the 15th. And we feel that due to the close proximity in the nexus with the Ninth Street sewer main, we propose adding this task to the P Street contract as a change order. This would not only minimize mobilization, but it would also ensure that the repair got done this year, which is substantially important, using other people's power and having the road blocked like that. So Mercer Fraser came in with an estimate for $53,000, which staff feels is very reasonable. That comes out to about $175 a foot, which is much less, $25, $30 less than what we're used to seeing for that type of work. Staff had also proposed that we provide a construction contingency for $7,000 on that. This would bring the not exceed contract amount from $135 that was awarded earlier this year to $195,000. This fiscal impact, this project is funded by the Sewer Capital Reserve Fund 560. The breakdown on it is the fiscal year budget allocated $150,000 for it. The contract awarded earlier was $135. So we're going to utilize that remaining $15,000 that was budgeted and asking for supplementary $45,000 for this project. So with that, staff recommends that council approve a supplementary budget request in the amount of $45,000 to add this work to that project.
Thank you. Any questions from council?
Matt, when would they be able to do this? Before the next stormy season?
The P Street project is going to be started up very soon, quite possibly before the end of the month, but yes, this year.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions, Mike? Okay, we'll open public comment. Anybody from the public like to speak on this item? See, and then we'll close public comment.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve a supplemental budget request for the P Street Sewer Replacement Project, CIP 9121, in the amount of $45,000 and establish a maximum contract amount of $195,000.
And I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay, we'll move on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor Trent and council members. Some of your upcoming meetings, particularly your council meetings, are September 3rd and September 16th at 6:00 PM. There is Planning Commission meetings on August 27th and September 10th at 6:00 PM. Measure E, there are meetings on September 17th and January 15th at 5:30 PM. The Rona Community Recreation and Park District meeting is September 4th at 2:30 PM. And the Fortuna Business Improvement District meeting is on October 22nd at 8:30 AM. And some of the items that I have been working on over the last couple of weeks, I've met with Chris Broadstock. I met with Chris Broadstock and, from Fortuna Rotary to talk with him and city staff about a human pet fountain. It's a fountain that is tall enough for a human and short enough for a dog to drink from. And so the likely location of this donated fountain will be hopefully at the River Lodge. And we scouted out some possible sites. And so hopefully we will land on the perfect site with minimal disruption to all of the beautiful concrete work around there.
Amy, excuse me, it's Fortuna Sunrise.
Fortuna Sunrise, thank you.
There's a lot of competition between the two, so.
Thank you for the clarification. Much appreciated. In addition, the Parks and Rec Director and myself, we met with Humboldt Transit Authority just to get a better understanding of transit in Fortuna because transit is something new, that's something new to both of us. We just wanted to better understand that. I've also wrapped up the Measure P presentation. As a reminder, we have a sales tax measure on the November ballot and that is a 3/4% sales tax measure to maintain and improve public safety and parks and all the other essential services such as pavement and other public works functions, as well as planning, planning, P. There's lots of Ps. Parks, planning, public works, police. So it's the perfect letter for us. And the first Measure P presentation will be tomorrow morning at the bright and early hour of 7:00 AM at Kiwanis. Thank you, council member Mike Johnson for that. I will be there at 7:00 AM. I also attended Talk Shop and got to talk a little bit about the City of Fortuna on Talk Shop. And of course, I'm always meeting with department heads. And then I also had a brief conversation with a consultant about doing some goal-setting with the council and possibly maybe even some visioning in the future. So hopefully there'll be more to come about that conversation in the future. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you.
I, I think it was Sunrise Rotary that installed a pet fountain and human fountain at the Conroy Field in Rona Park, at the baseball, Conroy Field, Little League Field. So we have one. It'd be good to get another one for our furry friends that, walking on the riverwalk there.
Absolutely.
I actually, during baseball season, saw that got used a lot.
Good.
Uh huh. And the dogs loved it. Okay, feature agenda items. None? City council reports.
I have nothing to report.
Okay.
I have a little bit here. Just had a HCOG meeting last week and we saw a variety of presentations. One called the Keys Campaign, talking about the impact of housing availability and cost in the community and the benefits that people that could get into a house derive from that. Also a presentation on Caltrans Cycle 2 Highway Maintenance in your, primarily in Eureka, but down on 4th and 5th Streets, crosswalks, rapid flash beacons. The new, I think it was SB 431 or 531 that changed the distance for red curb from the crosswalk back. So you've got like, I think it's 20 feet back now. And that, how that affects things makes it visibility for the pedestrians and people using the crosswalks and prioritizing essential services in an era of economic disasters. So that was a presentation done by Sean Quincy and the Public Works Director, Tom Matson. The approval of the City of Fortuna and the City of Riedel's LTF claims for 24, 25, and an amendment to the overall work program, which is HCOG's budget. And it was for a positive reason though, the, being the recipient of a couple of grants. So we amended the budget up to account for the grants and the work that was going to be done. We call it the overall work program because it, each budget item has a page dedicated to what the money's being used for, how it, the work that's going to be done. And people can see what's happening and the money don, not donated, but the money allocated to it. We also appointed a local member to the Great Redwood Trail Commission. It was Riedel Mayor Deborah Garns. And she'll serve two years and then the next city to be represented will be from Mendocino County. And the way it's set up, it covers Mendocino, Humboldt, Lake, and I think Sonoma County. Wherever the Redwood Trail goes through, that's, that county will get a representative for two years on the Great Redwood Trail Board. And that's what I have to report that we didn't last week. Thank you.
Okay, I've been busy working on the HOPS Committee. HOPS in Humboldt is this Saturday down at the park. The, the main reason I'm on the HOPS Committee is because 100% of our profits are granted back into the community. So we have, we have given away thousands of dollars within our community. And we do three, $1,000 scholarships to high school students every year. So I'm really proud of this program. I don't like beer, but somebody's got to work the gate and take care of the money, right? Without drinking. So that's my job. So anyway, anybody who's interested in going, we have, I think, I was going to get, bring the numbers and I didn't bring them with me. It's something like 30, don't quote me the exact number, but it's a large amount of breweries that are coming. We also have vendors, food vendors and sale vendors. If you just want to come look around, you can always get a designated driver ticket. They're a lot cheaper. You just don't get a glass to drink beer. But it's usually a very fun event. Ran mostly by a bunch of volunteers within our community. And then I have started up my senior center potluck, five-minute speeches, you know, going in and talking to the seniors at the senior center. They always have lots of questions on what's going on in Fortuna. So last, last week I did a presentation on the city's tax measure. So there was a lot of questions on that, but it went over, it went over very well. I really enjoy talking to the seniors at the senior center. And that's all I have to report for this meeting. So with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I will second.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you all for coming.